You heard, I've been round the world. And I've been searching for you. Gonna find that little girl, but I can't find the time no more. And an old man told me, he said, "Boy, you know you gotta be there." But he wouldn't show me, and I ain't got the time, no, I ain't got the time, oh yeah. Disconcerted, half spin and deserted, tell me will I ever find you? 'Cause I can't find my way where to go or to stay, and I'm looking through the pink dust. Pink dust on the bedroom floor. Pink dust in the sheets. Pink dust that I gotta score. Pink dust and I don't think I'll ever sleep. Pink dust in the bathroom drawer. Pink dust on your cheeks. Pink dust now and evermore. Pink dust, that's the one thing in between you and me. Did I ever love you? Did you ever love me? Does it really matter? 'Cause the pink dust in my eyes and I can hardly see. I can hardly see. I can hardly see. 'Cause the pink dust in my eyes and I can hardly see. Like a little on set. Have a little trip, but don't you know we're going nowhere? But I'm feeling like I feel right. Don't you let it slip. Don't you lose your grip on what a fantasy can do to pain here. We can be feeling like I feel right. And we're gonna break up with this time. 'Cause we just had a kiss and we too bad. Remember twenty-one? When the night felt young, the way we danced into our daydreams? You had me feeling like I feel right. Off the summer rain, but it doesn't say no when you know you're going nowhere. We should be feeling like I feel right. And we're gonna break up with this time. 'Cause we just had a kiss and we too bad.
You don't even need to know her name. You seen her type and you know the game. No matter how you start it, all ends the same. Reckless for love, reckless for love. The best you got doesn't work at all. She only gets a thrill from sabotage. Flashes a smile just before you fall. Reckless for love, reckless for love. Shut it down, she's standing her up. And no matter what you do, she always gets what she wants. And she gives you just a little and a little too much. She's reckless for love, and she's reckless for love. She's taking all you got, but it's never enough. And your heart ain't nothing but something that you know never comes. And she gives you just a little and a little too much. She's reckless for love, and she's reckless for love. Reckless for love, reckless for love. Reckless for love, reckless for love. She take your heart and leave a ransom note. Push you away if you get too close. Still what is left, 'cause it's all she knows. Reckless for love, reckless for love. The best you got doesn't work at all. She only gets a thrill from sabotage. Flashes a smile just before you fall. Reckless for love, reckless for love. Shut it down, she's standing her up. And no matter what you do, she always gets what she wants. And she gives you just a little and a little too much. She's reckless for love, and she's reckless for love. She's taking all you got, but it's never enough. And your heart ain't nothing but something that you know never comes. And she gives you just a little and a little too much. She's reckless for love, and she's reckless for love. Reckless for love, reckless for love. Reckless for love, reckless for love.
In my head, I play a supercut of us. All the magic we gave off. All the love we hadn't lost. And in my head, the visions never stop. These ribbons wrap me up. But when I reach for you, there's just a supercut. In your car, the radio up. In your car, the radio up. We keep trying to talk about us. I'm someone you may be my love. I'll be your quiet afternoon crush. Be your violent overnight rush. Make you crazy over my touch. But it's just a supercut of us. Supercut of us. Oh, it's just a supercut of us. A supercut of us. So I fall into continents and cars. All the stages and the stars, I turn all of it to just a supercut. 'Cause in my head, in my head, I do everything right. When you call, when you call, I forgive and not fight. Because I, the moments I play in the dark. We were wild and fluorescent, come home to my heart. In your car, the radio up. In your car, the radio up. We keep trying to talk about us. Slow motion, I'm watching our love. I'll be your quiet afternoon crush. Be your violent overnight rush. Make you crazy over my touch. But it's just a supercut of us. Supercut of us. Oh, it's just a supercut of us. A supercut of us. But it's just a supercut of us. A supercut of us. Oh, it's just a supercut of us. A supercut of us. 'Cause in my head, in my head, I do everything right. When you call, I forgive and not fight. All the moments I play in the dark. I'm fluorescent, come home to my heart. In my head, I do everything right. When you call, when you call, I forgive and not fight. Because I, the moments I play in the dark. We were wild and fluorescent, come home to my heart. 'Cause in my head, in my head, I do everything right. When you call, when you call, I forgive and not fight. Because I, the moments I play in the dark. We were wild and fluorescent, come home to my heart. In my head, I do everything right. In my head, I do everything right.
I'm picturing your face with millions of colors. Just to fill the empty space. Standing in between all mutual planets. I'm moving back to you. Gravitation feels. I'm picturing your dreams with millions of particles. Fill the current in space-time. I'm moving back to you. Gravitation feels. Stuck in between. Galaxy, galaxy. Won't you be my constellation I need? Someone to kiss my hands and my feet and make me feel complete, oh yeah. Mysterious universe. I know you're unrehearsed, but I see the light in your hands. You're the man with the plan, oh yeah. But it feels just like I'm falling out of time. Higher than a pretty star. Don't you break my faded heart. Don't put me out. Show me what it's all about. Don't you break my faded heart. It's no, it's no. It's a secret, a big heart. Fantasy, fantasy. You got me howling like a dog in the heat. I'm trying not to run up and fight it, but I can lose another night, oh no. So call me a Romeo. I'll show you the way, my thunderbird sees. With you in the sway, backseat is all I ever need, oh yeah. But it feels like I'm running out of time. Oh, oh. Higher than a pretty star. Don't you break my faded heart. Don't put me out. Show me what it's all about. Don't you break my faded heart. It's no, it's no. It's a secret, a big heart. I'm searching for the sign. Been looking, waiting, I. Heart in the trenches. Heart in the heavens. Higher than a pretty star. Don't you break my faded heart. Don't put me out. Show me what it's all about. Don't you break my faded heart. It's no, it's no.
Don't act like you're jealous when you're not. 'Cause I'm caught between knowing you could kill us, so no corn. Let go, you see. It's clear that I'm just your distraction. I made my bed, but don't act like you're jealous when you're not. We had our thing down, you just couldn't help yourself. We hadn't understood it. Now look at us. It was so good until your lies came out. Don't act like you're jealous, 'cause you're not. Don't act like you're jealous. I'm just your distraction. Don't act like you're jealous. I'm just your distraction. Don't act like you're into me when you're not. 'Cause I guarantee, I'mma show you how I feel. My stage rolled up, no referee. It's clear that I'm just your distraction. I made my bed, but don't act like you're into me when you're not. We had our thing down, you just couldn't help yourself. We hadn't understood it. Now look at us. It was so good until your lies came out. Don't act like you're jealous, 'cause you're not. Don't act like you're jealous. I'm just your distraction. Don't act like you're jealous. I'm just your distraction. No, no, no. Don't wanna push me till my heart is torn apart. No, no, no. Believe me, this ain't something that you wanna start. Don't act like you're jealous. I'm just your distraction. Don't act like you're jealous. I'm just your distraction. Don't act like you're jealous. I'm just your distraction.
Vera.
Here.
Goode.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Dingfelder.
Here.
Citro.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
And Maniscalco.
Here. All right, as we begin with...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. If the clerk, when she does her own calls, she could just announce this as a physical call. That would just make it a habit, make things better.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to open all the public hearings, 9:30 a.m. and 10:30 a.m.?
So move.
The motion from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Citro, in favor?
Aye.
All right, because we are gonna lose one of our members. I'd like to go ahead and get 56 and 57 out of the way, because these were continued, because we didn't have a full quorum. Were the council members that were not here able to watch the video and listen to the testimony on 56 and 57, that's Union Street and Mississippi?
Mr. Chair, so adequately prepared.
You have, okay? Everybody else?
Mr. Goode, are you prepared to vote on those two as well?
All right, let's start with...
Could you just acknowledge that for the record?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sorry.
All right. All right, we'll start with item number 56.
Now, if I can, counsel, if you want to hear from the clerk, a little bit of background, a little bit of procedure on that. I should just bring you up to speed on what those items are.
Yes, Chair, these two items were moved forward as the continuing...
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
The two items, number 56 and 57, were continued due to enough, not enough votes. The votes were three to two, with Dingfelder and Carlson voting no on both items.
Now, if I can, counsel, Rule 6H, just so that people know, if a motion in a quasi-idical matter fails to receive at least four votes, the motion fails. And if another motion in order is not made, the public hearing shall automatically be reopened and continue to a time certain at the next regularly scheduled council meeting. That being the case, I should point out also, for the purposes of the public, the public hearing portion of this meeting, of these hearings, were conducted last Thursday night, and the public hearing portion was concluded. So this is the first, this is the first reading. Anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this would have the opportunity to make their comments at second reading, assuming that these do go forward, which will be announced by the clerk. So that being said, and the council members who are absent are prepared to vote. Is there another motion? Are there any questions of council members before we...
Counsel...
Are there any questions of council members before we close the public hearing?
Councilman Carlson.
Just one admin thing real fast. I think my, it looks like my computer started spinning and it's not, it's not showing up anymore, if you guys care.
What was that, I'm sorry?
Regular camera.
I can't hear you.
I said my, my laptop is not, does not have video running anymore, if that makes a difference.
Oh. I think we're able to continue. Are you able to see the screen of what's happening on the, in the room? Okay.
It doesn't bother me, if you guys don't care, but I wanted to-
So you're not on the screen, is what you're saying? You're not on, you're not seen on video, is that correct?
Right.
Can we proceed with item number-
I think we can, you do have a physical quorum. And he has noticed, in the, he has noticed his being present on the video in the council room, is that correct? Mr. Hayden? The answer is yes. So, Councilman Carlson, you are on camera, albeit at a distance, but you are present. And you have been so noted by the clerk, so again-
He's up, he's up now.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Chairman, of city council members before a motion to close the public hearing?
Can I just get a, from the clerk, what was the vote on 56?
On 56, it was a 3-2 vote, with Dingfelder and Carlson voting no, and Viera and Goos being absent at vote.
Okay, Councilman Miranda.
I believe I voted no on that item, I'm not sure, but I think I did.
Yeah, I think, I thought-
I think you voted yes to move it forward to today.
Okay.
I think that's what, what it was, so it wasn't, it didn't have to be redone.
Mr. Miranda, I would agree with you substantively. I remember being against, no, for this, and you were against it.
Right.
So, I think we need to clarify that.
Well, I think it should be, if that's council's, we could go back to the record. But obviously, this is the vote that counts, the last vote failed.
Well, we just wanna make sure the record's straight.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for that.
All right, item number 56.
Item number 56 is, if there are no questions, then what's in order is a motion to close, and whatever motion is appropriate of council.
All right, do we have a motion to close the item 56?
So move.
Second. We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder, with a second from Councilman Citro, I believe. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, who would like to read this? Councilman Viera for 56.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I read an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 3305 West Union Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section 1, from zoning district classification RS 50, residential single-family to PD Plan Development Residential Single Family detached, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a, yes, sir.
Question on the motion. And I was trying to get your attention before we closed the public hearing. This was the, this was the one, as I recall, that was like a 49-foot?
Yes.
Okay. Instead of the 50 that they needed.
Yes, sir.
If you want, if you want.
No, that's all right, that's enough clarification.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
We have a motion-
And you were present at the time, is that correct, Mr. Dingfelder, last week? That's, okay. I'm trying to recall. Okay, thank you.
We have a motion from Councilman Viera, second from Councilman Citro, roll call vote.
Viera.
Yes.
Goos.
Yes.
Dingfelder.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
No.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
No.
Motion carried, with Carlson and Miranda voting no.
Okay.
We're not done yet.
I'm sorry. Second reading and adoption will be held on December 17th, 2020, at 9:30 a.m.
Sir, did you hear that? December 17th is second reading.
Yes.
And also for members of the public who want an opportunity to speak, if they had called in today, even though there's no public comment taken on this, they do have that opportunity. On the date is the 17th of December at 9:30 a.m., or sometime thereafter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number 57. Do we have any questions or comments from council members?
I did.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pressman.
Is this gonna be, are you gonna be eliciting testimony from him?
Yes.
If he could be sworn in, please.
Please raise your hand. Please swear our firm in testimony that you're about to give is true to nothing but the truth.
And I'm gonna ask Mr. Pressman this, and perhaps one of the, one of the adjacent neighbors, if that's okay with Mr. Chairman. There was an indication of some discussion between you and the adjacent neighbors as related to some of the concerns they had related to this project. Were you able to get together with them, and your engineer, and make any progress?
Yes, Councilman, I hear David Lauren and Randy Griffin are here in the audience. We did have our civil engineers, who worked on the project, that did review the site, they walked the site, they asked for all permits, which had been recently completed on the site in 2018, and we did not even know we're not adding a single square foot of building or pavement of any kind. We have had many between us, we've had several discussions with the neighbors, Kim and Donald, who are here, long discussions in some cases, and we met probably around 45 minutes. So, our engineers came up with a couple solutions, and not speaking for Kim or Donald, they were not acceptable, or did not feel that they would address their concerns. And I, I do have to say that our civil engineers also looked at the site next door, south of us, and they did find, or their opinion was that some of that drainage, if we want to call it infrastructure, swales were deficient, detrimental on that site. So, following the direction of council, we did have engineers look at it, we had a lot of discussions with the neighbors. What was suggested, again, was not acceptable to them, and in light that the rentals were new owners, they'll continue to work with the neighbors, if they're able to move forward, and if they're able to take control of the property, they'll be new owners and continue to work with the neighbors. So what we did was, we followed the science, which is today's buzzword diligently, and we diligently followed up with the neighbors, and they're good folks, good, good folks, and we enjoyed working with them. So, we would ask the council to move the issue forward, as both your staff and the planning commission staff have recommended support. And, again, there's absolutely no footprint change of any paving, square footage whatsoever that's gonna change the site, they'll literally just be moving into the same building.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I could, I don't know which one of the two of you wanna, would like-
I'm sorry, Mr. Dingfelder, if I can. I don't know if I can't see you too well with the screen there. But the question comes up is that they did testify at the first public hearing, at the first reading. You're calling them back for something, the question that needs to be asked is, is this relevant to council's decision today, relative to what you have to vote on, in terms of the code, in terms of the application? I know two council members were not present, but I'm concerned about the inquiry about where you're going with this, and you're recalling witnesses who were here to speak at the first reading, rather than to perhaps raise the issue.
I guess I wished you would ask that before I asked Mr. Pressman to come up and give his side, and I, because it seems like it's either none or both, at this point.
Well, the question-
I opened my comments with saying I wanted to ask both sides where they were at discussion.
He did, he did, he said my-
Well, if you can, if you can, okay, if you can, Mr. Chairman, if the, if the city council wants to hear that, then my advice to them is that it's going to be that this does not, is not a relevant, necessarily relevant to the decision that you have to make. Certainly, it was an issue that you raised, that certainly was an issue that I thought if, if Mr. Pressman had something that was useful to the city council that may help them make their decision, that's fine. But to open this up, and primarily the questions that were asked, or when I said, were there any questions, it's for the council members who reviewed the records and had questions on their own, and I'm sorry for that, I didn't clarify that. My concern, counsel, is I just don't want the record to be tainted. You have your expert testimony, the planning commission staff, the city staff, you have the testimony that you did here at the first reading, you had the statements of the city attorney's office as well, with regard to that, and I think that you need to make your decisions based on the competent substantial evidence in the record. And I think the record needs to be clear, that that is the determining factor in this case. I understand council's positions, and I certainly don't want to comment on them myself, but certainly, they were relevant to council members. But again, the most important thing is that this record, to the degree that we can, is based on competent substantial evidence, so whatever decision city council makes, when it's reviewed, if it's reviewed by a court of law, that it's upheld. So with that being said, it's council's pleasure, but the question is, if it should change or determine somebody's vote, based on what they hear today, that may be problematic.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Well, the only direction I have to go is, is in favor of the petitioner, if, if my vote changed, is that, as at last meeting, my vote was against the petitioner, so I don't know that there's a huge amount of risk in that regard, as far as this council member's concerned. I think, out of fairness, I did ask Mr. Pressman to speak first, and I was hoping that we'd hear from one of the neighbors to speak second, so-
Well, you know something, and I want to apologize to those neighbors, because I didn't realize that this was a case where it was coming back under Rule 6 H. And that is a distinction with a difference here, because you did have a full first public hearing. And this is, if it does go forward, certainly, if it, if it doesn't go forward, then the matter is subject to, you know, review by a circuit court, if so choose, if someone so chooses. But if it does go forward, there is a full second public hearing as well. So that being said, I want to apologize to you, because I did not recognize the fact that you had already spoken at the first reading, and that-
Unless you are invited to speak up by council, and that's what, if that, Councilmember Dingfelder is doing that.
What I'm saying to you, counsel, is, this is a very unusual situation, because of the circumstances that were presented to council, that became an issue for council at last week's meeting. The question is, does Ms., I see Kate Wells is available online, and I'm wondering whether she wants to opine, if she has anything to add to what I've already added.
Thank you, Mr. Shelby. Kate Wells, Chief Assistant City Attorney. During last week's hearing, I did advise council, that to the extent council was going to include a condition of approval on the site plan, it was necessary for council to find that there was a reasonable relationship between the condition and the impact of the proposed rezoning. As Mr. Pressman confirmed today, the rezoning is to include an additional use in the existing PD. They're adding, seeking to add medical use to the existing uses, and they're not changing the footprint of the proposed building, or the existing building, excuse me. Any discussion last week with regard to drainage concerns expressed by the neighbors, I advise council that those questions were properly directed to another city department outside of the scope of the rezoning, and that advice stands today. Thank you.
Therefore?
Therefore, Mr. Chairman, I believe that, with apologies to the members of the public, it would be out of order, in my opinion, to be able to open this discussion and broaden it, for what purpose ultimately would not be relevant to the ultimate decision.
All right, so we leave it at that, but there is an opportunity to speak at second reading, correct?
Assuming, assuming it passes by council, moves to a second reading.
Okay. Assuming there is a second reading, there's gonna be an opportunity to, for the public to speak, which means anybody. All right, Councilman Dingfelder? All right. May I have a motion to close?
So move.
We have a motion to close from Councilman Goos, second from Councilman Viera, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Councilman Goos, would you mind reading item number 57?
File number REZ 2079, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance rezoning property in the university of 2420 West Mississippi Avenue, in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section 1, from the zoning district classification, PD Plan Development Office slash business, slash professional, to Plan Development Office Medical or Business Professional, providing effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Citro, roll call vote?
Question on the motion.
Wait. Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you. I'm not gonna support the motion, I believe that there's been testimony that says that this, this development, past, present, and future, has adverse impact on the adjacent development, and, and therefore, I can't support it. I was hoping that it might be addressed and resolved between, between last week and today, at least verbally, but that doesn't seem to be the case, so, thank you.
All right, roll call vote?
Viera.
Yes.
Goos.
Yes.
Dingfelder.
No.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
No.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Motion carried, with Dingfelder and Carlson voting no. Second reading and adoption will be held on December 17th, 2020, at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you very much. All righty, we're gonna start our agenda at 2:41. Item number one.
Good afternoon, council members. Andrea Zelman, Deputy City Attorney. This is the first reading of the ordinance, which we briefed you about back in October, making non-substantial, non-substantive changes to the land development code. I do wanna note two things. When we talked to you about this in October, we had change, we had proposed changing the notice requirements to allow PD applicants to no longer send a site plan to the neighborhood association, based on comments made by Councilman Dingfelder and Councilman Goos, I believe. We revised that language, and if you look on page 19 of the ordinance, we now are requiring that the notice letter itself provide information on how to view a digital copy of the complete application, including the site plan where applicable. And that was a suggestion that you all had made. Two other things, hopefully you have a copy of the substitute ordinance with the much, much shorter title. We would not have wanted to make you read the original title that was uploaded into sire. And then finally, this is a kind of a late change that I was discussing with staff as recently as this morning, we'd like to, between first and second reading, change the effective date of the ordinance, which is the very last numbered paragraph in the ordinance, to state that it will take effect February 1st, 2021. And in that way, we can notify all of the land use practitioners and the neighborhood groups, and so on and so forth, of some of the changes. You know, for instance, we're making changes to the notice requirements, and it would be unfair if this went into effect immediately after the mayor signed it, without us having had the opportunity to give those folks advanced notice of the change. So we thought having a date certain would be better. So, we would propose to make that change between first and second reading, which we believe we can do. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions, or if not, you can proceed to first reading. Thank you.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, we've received some correspondence from some of our neighborhood leaders, expressing concern, when they saw the, the length of the original title, and even the length of the proposed amendments. I think they got a little freaked out that we were, that we were addressing some of the substantive issues that were included in, actually, item 75 of our agenda today. So I just wanted to assure anybody who is watching or listening, as the substitute ordinance states, this, this is just a cleanup ordinance to address errors and conflicts between the various chapters and sections of, of the zoning and land use code. And it's, and we've, we've carefully come through it to make sure that it's not substantive. And I just wanted to reassure the, the folks who had those concerns that that's the case. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Zelman, for your hard work on this.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, a reminder to city council and to the public, this is on for first reading, it's a legislative matter. There will be a public hearing on that, it will be announced and- will be announced then by the clerk and advertised, and the public will have an opportunity, if they choose to, to address any issues that may be of concern.
All right. So we see how long this is. There's a substitute at the end.
Which is a lot shorter, and that's the one to read.
Wow.
Because I believe that was a correction that was made. It was Scrivener's.
Yeah, I apologize. We had a working title going just so we could keep track of all the changes and should have changed the title before we uploaded it to Sire.
I'll be glad to read it.
So you now have a much shorter title to read.
Thank you very much. Councilman Dingfelder.
In regard to item one, I will, hold on, 2020-8, Chapter 27, I'll be glad to read the substitute ordinance for first reading as follows. Substitute ordinance, excuse me, an ordinance relating to correction of unintentional errors or conflicts between sections of this chapter or with other chapters, and amendments to procedural matters making revisions to City of Tampa Code of Ordinances, Chapter 27, zoning and land development, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Goode. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, you mean a roll call vote?
Viera.
Yes.
Goode.
Yes.
Dingfelder.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda. Motion carried with Miranda being absent at vote. Second reading and adoption will be held on December 17, 2020, at 9:30 a.m.
All right. Item number two.
Good afternoon, Council. Elaine Lund, City of Tampa Historic Preservation Staff. Item number two is an avalorum historic preservation tax exemption application for the property at 220 East Madison Street. This is a City of Tampa local historic landmark. I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Is this where the CVS is at?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council members? That started off as a bank in the 1960s. Now it's housing and pharmacy and whatnot. So glad it's there and not demolished like so many other buildings downtown. All right. Councilman Carlson, would you like to read item number two?
Marty, I read the whole thing or?
Yes.
The ordinance, it's by title, yes. Ordinance being presented for first read.
I'd like to move file number E2020-8CH27, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance approving an historic preservation property tax exemption application relative to the restoration, renovation, or rehabilitation of certain property owned by Urban Core Holdings II LLC located at 220 East Madison Street, Tampa, Florida, and is a designated local landmark based upon certain findings, providing for notice to the property appraiser of Hillsborough County, providing for severability, providing for appeal of all ordinances in conflict, and providing effective date.
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Dingfelder. Roll call vote?
Viera.
Yes.
Goode.
Yes.
Dingfelder.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda. Motion carried unanimously with Miranda being absent at vote. Second reading and adoption will be held on December 17, 2020, at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you very much. Item number three.
Again, Elaine Lund, Historic Preservation Staff. Item number three is also an avalorum tax exemption application, the Historic Preservation Incentive Program. This is for the property located at 602 East Francis Avenue, a contributing structure in the Tampa Heights Historic District. It's a single-family residence. This particular project involved also the relocation of the house from one lot to the next. The original lot is owned by the Florida Department of Transportation, and the new owners were able to relocate the house out of the right-of-way of FDOT and also do a very nice rehabilitation project with it. And I'm available if you have questions. Thank you.
Do you have a picture of this under construction or while it was being moved? I happened to cross it at the time. It's up there by the Tampa Heights Garden, and it was kind of like, wow, they're moving that thing.
That's really cool.
Yeah. They did a lot of work on the house. Do you have a final version of what it looked like when it was done? Beautiful.
And what year was it built?
This house was built circa 1910.
I'm glad that it's being preserved. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll ask Councilman Citro to read item number three.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. File number E2020-8, Chapter 27, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, and ordinance providing an historic preservation property tax exemption application relative to the restoration, renovation, and rehabilitation of a certain property owned by Matthew and Nicole Perry, located at 602 East Francis Avenue, Tampa, Florida, in the Tampa Heights Local Historic District based upon certain findings, providing for notice to the property appraiser of Hillsborough County, providing for severability, providing for appeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Viera. Roll call vote?
Viera.
Yes.
Goode.
Yes.
Dingfelder.
Yes.
Maniscalco.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda. Motion carried unanimously with Miranda being absent at vote. Second reading and adoption will be held on December 17, 2020, at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. We go to the consent items here. Public Safety Committee, before we begin, I just have a quick question. If we were to reject these items that all pertain to the police department, what happens to the money? It just, we lose it. We cannot reallocate it. We can't. That's it.
John Bennett, Chief of Staff. We'd have, let's see if Chief Financial Officer Dennis Rehero is on the line by chance to answer that question.
Go ahead.
Just another related question, and I know there's a couple items later on that maybe Chief Burcall is going to answer. But, you know, members of, certain members of the public said that they're concerned about us militarizing the police. As I read this, this doesn't fund tanks or assault weapons or rubber bullets or anything like that. Is that, am I correct, or is, what's your take on what this funds?
Well, I can tell you historically, Councilman, most of the grants that we're talking about are designed either, as we mentioned before, for community-oriented policing or protecting critical infrastructure, both in Tampa and in the region with our regional partners. It's been going on since about the 2002 era. And again, you know, there's 16 sectors in our, in our community, in every community in the nation, that supply everything from our energy sector, nuclear, water, everything you can think of, and all of that, including cyber. So again, without knowing the specifics of each grant, because I wasn't a participant in developing them, I don't really know all the risk factors about denying and/or what they're going to. But that's been the traditional realm of these grants. I don't know if Chief Lee Burcall is on the line that can address anything.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Goode.
Before we get there, I know we're on these two, four and five, but as it relates to, is 59, no, 60, 59, I believe it is, 59 and 60. When I read the report, it's not really saying what the money will be utilized for. I think it's clear in four and five, but I don't believe in 59 and 60, what the dollars will be used for. So if we get clarification of 59 and 60, I'm clear on four and five. I just need to know what 60 and 59 will be utilized. I didn't see where exactly what it'll be utilized for.
All right. Once we get to that, unless there's someone on the line.
Sounds like Chief.
Lee Burcall's on the line. If you'd like me to speak, just let me know.
Yeah, I would.
Go ahead.
Yes, yes, sir.
I can speak to all of them, but I'll address the UASI grant. That's the Urban Area Security Initiative, also known as UASI. It's a federally funded Department of Homeland Security grant. It was developed shortly after 9/11, which assists high-threat, high-density urban area efforts to build, sustain, and deliver capabilities necessary to prevent, prepare for, protect against, and respond to acts of terrorism. Protecting the nation from terrorism is the primary function of Department of Homeland Security. To achieve this outcome, the DHS must coordinate the protection of our nation's critical infrastructures. As Chief of Staff Bennett alluded to, the Department of Homeland Security identified 16 critical infrastructure sectors, which include chemical, communications, dams, emergency services, financial services, government facilities, information technology, transportation, commercial facilities, critical manufacturing, defense industrial base, energy, food, and agriculture, health and public safety, nuclear, water and wastewater. The Presidential Policy Directive 21, established under President Obama, updated the National Infrastructure Protection Plan, and provided federal government the authority to enhance its critical infrastructure security and resilience through improving cybersecurity. So in 2020, the DHS identified four priorities, which include cybersecurity, protection of soft targets, enhancing information and intelligence sharing, and emerging threats. So UASI has 32 urban areas in the nation, and the Tampa Bay region encompasses eight counties, Citrus, Hardy, Hernando, Hillsborough, Pasco, Pinellas, Polk, and Sumter. This year, the region was awarded $3,325,000, and 37 different agencies across our region benefited from this grant, or will benefit from the grant. This includes fire rescue, police, medical, emergency management, supervisor elections, and other local government that need, that have the needs in this region. The Tampa Police Department, which is one of the largest municipalities in this region, has less than a quarter of this grant. So this is not a police grant. It's a regional grant for the entire Tampa Bay area. For example, one of the items is active shooter kits for fire rescue personnel, which was over half a million dollars. If that answers your question about the UASI grant, if you have any questions.
Is that all right?
But the question, the question of the public on any of these is just, is it, does it pay for any weapons that could be used against protesters or people speaking out their First Amendment rights?
No, all of this is, many type of things that I went over with before. It would be terrorism prevention, electronic for intelligence sharing and so forth, but nothing designed for protesters in any way.
One of them I saw, tell me if I read this correctly, but it's bomb handling training, like in a potential terrorist attack. It teaches people how to handle that. Is that correct?
Yeah. There's a whole section on our EOD Explosive Ordinance Team, which would be specifically for officers that are on a regional response for suspicious devices and how to handle them for the community safety.
Thank you very much. Viera?
Thank you very much. No, I'll let the cat out of the bag. I'm going to vote for this, and I hope we all do. We just had a presentation on a public safety master plan. These are things that appear to be reasonably calculated to defending and supporting the people of Tampa, and I intend to vote on these, and I hope my fellow council members do as well. And when it comes to issues involving protesters, et cetera, I think that, you know, a policy, obviously, of supporting freedom of speech, et cetera, et cetera, is something that I support, freedom of expression, no matter what that expression is, et cetera. I don't see a contradiction between that very noble all-American purpose and what we should be approving here today. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, Martin Shelby, just to let you know that I've been informed that Mr. O'Herro, Dennis Rehero, is on the line if council does have any questions.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Goode.
Before we get Mr. O'Herro, I understand four and five. I'm supportive of that because, you know, we have a lot of things going on with national security. I was just asking in reference to 59 and 60, utilization of those dollars, what would that be utilized for? I get four and five. I'm just figuring out 59 and 60.
That's what Burcall went over.
I thought he went over, so you're saying four, five, and 59 and 60 are the same grants?
No. If you look at 59 and 60, am I correct? Yes. That's what he went over.
Okay.
The $3 million and how it's broken down. And I know we have Miss Rehero on the line. What happens if we vote to reject this grant money?
Hi, this is Dennis Rehero, CFO. I'm sorry, I'm getting an echo. Can you hear me?
I can hear you fine.
This is Dennis Rehero, CFO for the City of Tampa. If council chooses not to approve this grant funding, well, we, obviously, we give it back to other organizations and other localities that have applied for it. But further to what Mr. Burcall, excuse me, Chief Burcall said, the sub recipients that we will be distributing it to will not get their funding.
Okay. Thank you very much. I had no intention to vote against it. I just wanted clarification because what we heard in public comment was militarizing the police and further militarizing the police. But I see here safe motorcycle and rider techniques, or Homeland Security Fund, and then everything that Burcall had explained, I mean, this is, I think it's going to be put to good use, not to militarize the police and take it any further. It's necessities. We have a lot of valuable assets throughout the City of Tampa that need protected from terrorism and whatnot. This is a completely separate thing. And that answers all my questions. And that was, that was the reason why I asked. So if there, go ahead.
If I could just say one more thing, you know, we've obviously had a lot of people speak out over the summer, and we're trying to listen to and make a lot of changes related to the feedback. In some cases, it's hard to read the agenda to figure out what's being funded and what isn't. And my suggestion would be that somebody from maybe the PR Department, PIO of the police, every time a police budget issue comes up, meet with some of these groups in the community and talk to them about what's coming up so they have complete information. And then if they're still against it, then we'll hear from it. But that way, that way, they're not trying to decipher what limited information is online. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Citro, would you like to move items four through 11?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I move items number four through 11.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Viera. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Next up, we have Parks, Rec, and Cultural Committee, items 12 through 16, with the exception of 13 that was pulled and will be coming up under staff reports. Councilmember Goode, would you mind taking 12, then 14 through 16?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move items 12, 14, 15, and 16.
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Viera. Do we have, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none. Councilman Dingfelder, public works.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll move items 17 through 19.
We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Carlson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next up, Councilmember Citro as Vice Chair of the Finance Committee. Would you move items 20 through 25?
Yes, I will. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I move items 20 through 25 and move the substitute on item number 24.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Citro. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Dingfelder. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up is Building, Zoning, and Preservation Committee with...
Mr. Chairman, just in regard to item 25, which, if you look at your agenda, related to police extra-duty audit, and I spoke with staff about this, including TPD. The only criticism in the audit, if you saw it, was apparently we're really good about going out and providing the off-duty officers to various businesses and events and stadiums and that sort of thing, but we're not so great on collections. And apparently, there were about 10% of the collections were in arrears. So I'm sure Mr. Bennett and Mr. Rehero saw that criticism. And apparently, it's sort of an interdepartmental problem because TPD provides the service, but then the revenue and finance folks do the collections. So anyway, I just wanted to point that out and hope that perhaps next time Ms. Glover and her team look at that, they've done a better job with their collections.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Goode.
I guess Mr. Brings, Dingfelder brought something out, so I guess in the extra-duty office, I guess the clients are not prepaying, I thought they all prepaid before they could get services, so I guess that must have changed.
Well, I don't know, maybe they, maybe they give a deposit or something like that, but clearly, there's a collection effort after the fact, and, and it's not perfect, so...
That's what they inquire about that, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Building, Zoning and Preservation Committee, twenty-six through thirty-six, Councilmember Carlson.
Yes, sir, I'd like to move twenty-six through thirty-six.
Wait, we have a removal on item number thirty-three and a continuance on thirty-five and thirty-six.
What was that, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
There's a request to remove agenda item number thirty-three and a continuance on thirty-five and thirty-six.
Uh-huh. Okay, can we get a motion to remove item thirty-three from the agenda?
So move.
We have a motion from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then item thirty-five, can we get a motion per the request of our CRA Director to continue this to December seventeenth?
Looks like thirty-five and thirty-six, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thirty-five and thirty-six to continue to December seventeenth.
So move.
We have a motion from Dingfelder, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Councilmember Carlson, if you could redo that motion with the exception of thirty-three, thirty-five and thirty-six.
Yes, sir, I'd like to move items twenty-six through thirty-two and item thirty-four.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Carlson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Dingfelder, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilmember Louis Vieira.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I hereby move items thirty-seven, thirty-eight and thirty-nine.
We have a motion from Councilmember Vieira, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, we go to our nine-thirty public hearings at three oh seven in the afternoon, we already moved the, moved to open the public hearing, so we'll begin with item number forty. Anybody for item number forty? No, can we get, anybody from the public wish to speak on item number forty?
Move to close.
Well, anybody at the kiosk?
I'm sorry.
Let's do the kiosk, and let's see if there's any, anybody online for the record.
There is no more register for this particular item.
Okay.
And the kiosk, I believe, is nobody in the kiosk.
All right, we have a motion to close from Councilman Dingfelder, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Councilmember Citro, would you mind reading item number forty?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, file number E twenty-twenty-eight, chapter twenty-five, an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance amending the Imagine twenty-forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property generally located at one oh two West Hyde Park Place and otherwise known as AIDS Memorial Park from Regional Mixed Use one hundred, RMU one hundred and Residential eighty-three, R eighty-three to recreational open space ROS, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second. Second with a comment from Councilman Dingfelder, go ahead, sir.
Right. Just wanted to make the legislative history abundantly clear on this ordinance, because it seemed to be confusing, apparently, last time, that this is a three-year ordinance, and no more, no more, no less, it could be more if, if the next council, three years from now, re-adopts it, or extends it, or expands it, or what have you, but I just wanted to put everybody on notice who might be interested in building in those areas, right now, they get no multi-modal fees attached to their projects, so that encourages them to do it, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it's forever. That's my stump speech. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was the second from Dingfelder, roll call vote?
Vieira?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda? Motion carried unanimously, will Miranda be an absentee vote?
Thank you very much. Next up is item number forty-one.
Jennifer Malone with the Planning Commission, item number forty-one is second reading on a plan amendment, is recognizing the AIDS Memorial Park as a park under the recreational open space, I'm available for questions.
Any questions or comments? Anybody in the public wish to speak on item number forty-one? Is there anybody at the kiosk? Is there anybody registered?
We did not receive any registration for this item.
Thank you very much.
Move close.
Motion to close from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Councilman Carlson, would you mind reading item number forty-one?
Yes, sir, I'd like to move file number PA nineteen eighteen A, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance amending the Imagine twenty-forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property generally located at one oh two West Hyde Park Place and otherwise known as AIDS Memorial Park from Regional Mixed Use one hundred, RMU one hundred and Residential eighty-three, R eighty-three to recreational open space ROS, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Dingfelder, roll call vote?
Vieira?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda? Motion carried unanimously, will Miranda be an absentee vote?
All right, thank you very much. Next is item number forty-two.
Jennifer Malone with the Planning Commission, item number forty-two, recognize Ballast Point Park as a recreational open space, future land use designation, I'm available for questions.
Do we have any questions or comments? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item, item number forty-two? Do we have anybody at the kiosk? Do we have anybody registered?
We did not receive any registration for this item.
Thank you very much. Next is item number forty-two.
Jennifer Malone with the Planning Commission, item number forty-two, recognize Ballast Point Park as a recreational open space, future land use designation, I'm available for questions.
Do we have a second from Councilman Dingfelder, roll call vote?
Vieira?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda? Motion carried unanimously, will Miranda be an absentee vote?
All right, thank you very much. Next is item number forty-two.
Jennifer Malone with the Planning Commission, item number forty-two, recognize Ballast Point Park as a recreational open space, future land use designation, I'm available for questions.
Do we have any questions or comments? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item, item number forty-two? Do we have anybody at the kiosk? Do we have anybody registered?
We did not receive any registration for this item.
Move close.
We have a motion to close from Councilman Goode, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Dingfelder.
Yes, sir, in regard to file PA nineteen eighteen B, I'll move the following ordinance for a second reading and adoption, an ordinance amending the Imagine twenty-forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property generally located at fifty-two one-two Interbay Boulevard and otherwise known as Ballast Point Park from Residential twenty, R twenty and Recreation Open Space ROS to Recreation Open Space ROS, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Goode, roll call vote?
Vieira?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda? Motion carried unanimously, will Miranda be an absentee vote?
All right, item number forty-three.
Jennifer Malone with the Planning Commission, item number forty-three, will recognize Centennial Park as a park under the recreational open space, future land use designation, I'm available for questions.
Do we have any questions? Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number forty-three? Is there anybody at the kiosk? Is there anybody registered?
Move close.
We did not receive any registration.
We have a motion to close from Councilman Goode, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilmember Goode's, item number forty-three.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, when, when you get done with this, I had a question.
Okay, Councilman Goode's.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, PA nineteen eighteen C, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance amending the Imagine twenty-forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property generally located at eighteen hundred East Eighth Avenue and otherwise known as Centennial Park from Residential fifty, R fifty to recreational open space, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilman Goode, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Dingfelder, roll call vote?
Vieira?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda? Motion carried unanimously, will Miranda be an absentee vote?
Councilman Dingfelder, you had a question or comment?
Well, we have some staff reports still, we're probably with staff waiting on the line for us to get to them.
Okay, we're, we're moving pretty quick, I don't...
Okay.
All right. Item number forty-four.
Jennifer Malone with the Planning Commission, item number forty-four is Cusack Park, recognized as the recreational open space, future land use designation, again, I'm available for questions.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number forty-four?
Move close.
What, anybody at the kiosk? Anybody registered?
We did not receive any registration.
All right, we have a motion to close from Councilman Goode, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Councilmember Vieira.
Yes, sir, item number forty-four, I read, an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance amending the Imagine two thousand and forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property generally located at twenty hundred North Fifteenth Street and otherwise known as Cascadian Park from Urban Mixed Use sixty, UMU sixty to Recreation, recreational open space R slash ROS, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, repeating, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Vieira, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Roll call.
I'm sorry, roll call vote?
Vieira?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda? Motion carried unanimously, will Miranda be an absentee vote?
All right, next item. Jennifer Malone is muted.
I apologize, Jennifer Malone with the Planning Commission staff, item forty-five, Twenty-Second Street Park, recreational open space, future land use amendment, I'm available for questions.
Any questions or comments? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number forty-five? Is there anybody at the kiosk? Is there anybody registered?
There are no registrations.
Thanks, can I get a motion to close?
So move.
Motion to close from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Citro, item number forty-five.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, file number PA nineteen eighteen E, an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance amending the Imagine twenty-forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property generally located at seventy-eight oh one North Twenty-Second Street and otherwise known as Twenty-Second Street Park from Light Industrial LI and Residential twenty, R twenty and recreational open spaces ROS, excuse me, to recreational open spaces ROS, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Goode, roll call vote?
Vieira?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda? Motion carried unanimously, will Miranda be an absentee vote?
Thank you very much. Item number forty-six.
Jennifer Malone with the Planning Commission, item number forty-six is Tappan Track Park to recognize the park under the recreational open space, future land use designation, I'm available for questions.
Any questions or comments? Anybody in the public wish to speak on item number forty-six? Anybody at the kiosk? Is there anybody registered?
We did not receive registration for this item.
Move close.
We have a motion to close from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Carlson, all in favor? All right, Councilmember Carlson.
Yes, sir, I'd like to move file number PA nineteen eighteen F, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance amending the Imagine twenty-forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property generally located at six six zero one South Cheryl Avenue and otherwise known as Tappan Track Park from Light Industrial LI, major environmentally sensitive areas ESA and Residential thirty-five, R thirty-five to recreational open space ROS, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Goode, roll call vote?
Vieira?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda? Motion carried unanimously, will Miranda be an absentee vote?
All right, next up is item number forty-seven.
Jennifer Malone with the Planning Commission, forty-seven, will recognize Tacoma Trail Park under the recreational open space, future land use designation, I'm available for questions.
Any questions? All right, hearing none, do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number forty-seven? Anybody at the kiosk? Anybody registered?
We did not receive registration for this item.
Move close.
We have a motion to close from Councilman Goode, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Carlson, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, Councilman Dingfelder, would you mind reading item number forty-seven?
Glad to, Mr. Chairman, in regard to file number PA nineteen eighteen G, I'll move the following ordinance for second reading and adoption, an ordinance amending the Imagine twenty-forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property generally located at one zero zero nine nine Tacoma Trail and otherwise known as Tacoma Trail Park from Residential ten, R ten and Residential twenty, R twenty to Resident, excuse me, to recreational open space ROS, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Goode, roll call vote?
Vieira?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda? Motion carried unanimously, will Miranda be an absentee vote?
All right, item number forty-eight.
Item number forty-eight is Plan Amendment nineteen twenty-one, which is proposing to remove terms from the Comprehensive Plan, it's, it's a text amendment, and again, I'm available for questions.
Any questions or comments? Do we have anybody for public comment on this item forty-eight? It's a text amendment, and again, I'm available for questions.
Any questions or comments? Do we have anybody for public comment on this item forty-eight? Do we have anybody at the kiosk? Do we have anybody registered?
We did not receive any registration for this item.
We have motion to close from Councilman Goode's. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Carlson, all in favor? Councilman Goode's, I believe you wrote.
Yes, sir. File number P A nineteen twenty-one, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance amending the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element to remove neighborhood policy five point one point nine, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Dean Felder, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dean Felder?
Yes.
Meniscoco?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda. Motion carried unanimously with Miranda being absent at vote.
All right, next up is item number forty-nine.
Chair, we do have the petitioner on the line. She just needs to turn on her video, it's Sherri Becker.
Okay, if you could turn on your video, we're at item number forty-nine.
You might tell her I'm the representative for her.
We have Mr. Michelini here for forty-nine, though. Okay, Mr. Michelini?
If you recall this-
Wait, wait. Where are you in?
I do. The council may recall that there were no utilities in this alley. It's unimproved, and that the petitioners were the adjacent property owners. There were no objections at the first hearing, and the objective was to vacate this alley so that the two adjacent property owners could enjoy that. The driveway access was no longer needed because the house on the north side was demolished. So we respectfully request your approval.
Any questions or comments for the gentlemen? Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number forty-nine? Do we have anybody at the kiosk? Do we have anybody registered?
We did not receive any registration for this item.
Do we have a motion to close?
Move close.
Motion to close from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Dean Felder?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Councilman Viera, item number forty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hereby move an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance vacating, closing, discontinuing, and abandoning a portion of the alleyway, right-of-way, lying south of Platt Street, north of Azalea Street, east of Hesperides Avenue, I always mispronounce that, and west of Manhattan Avenue and Belgrano subdivision, a subdivision of the city of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida, the same being more fully described in section one hereof, subject to certain covenants, conditions, and restrictions, more particularly set forth herein, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Goode's, roll call vote.
Viera?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dean Felder?
Yes.
Meniscoco?
Yes.
Carlson?
No.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda. Motion carried with Carlson voting no and Miranda being absent at vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel.
Item number fifty. Have you been sworn in, sir?
No. Francisco Otero Casio, one-three-zero, one-four, North Dale Mabry. Nothing has changed, we're petitioning to vacate the alley. There were no objections. Last hearing, and this is the alley that, towards the end of it, the school board of Hillsborough County actually vacated a while back, and there is several homes and two commercial properties in the front. My two clients wished to vacate it. We were not, we weren't aware of any opposition from the neighborhood, and we respectfully ask you to review this.
Do we have any questions or comments? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number fifty? Item number fifty. Anybody at the kiosk? Is there anybody registered?
We did not receive any registration for this item.
Move close.
We have motion to close from Councilmember Goode, second from Councilmember Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Councilmember Citro. Item number fifty.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. File number V A C twenty dash eleven, moving ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance vacating, closing, discontinuing, and abandoning a portion of the right-of-way alleyway located at south, located south of Cherry Street, north of Pine Street, east of Tempanyan Avenue, and west of Armenia, within the plat of McFarland's, additional to West Tampa, a subdivision of the city of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida, more and more fully described in section one hereof, subject to a certain easement reservations and covenants, conditions, and restrictions, and more particularly set forth herein, providing for an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Goode's, roll call vote.
Viera? Goode?
Yes.
Dean Felder?
Yes.
Meniscoco?
Yes.
Carlson?
No.
Citro?
Yes.
Motion carried with Carlson voting no, Viera and Miranda being absent at vote.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Next up is item number fifty-one. Item number fifty-one.
Chair, we did have Mr. Francisco Diaz register. He was on earlier today, but he is not on at this time.
Hmm. Thoughts, Mr. Shelby?
Well, if he's not present during the public hearing, then I guess you can't take his comments.
All righty, do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number fifty-one? Do we have anybody at the kiosk? Do we have anybody registered? No?
We did not receive any registration for this item.
May I have a motion to close? Motion to close from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Carlson, all in favor? Any opposed? Councilmember Carlson, oh, Councilmember Dean Felder.
Fifty-one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. In regard to V A C twenty dash eighteen, I'll move the following ordinance for second reading and adoption, an ordinance vacating, closing, discontinuing, and abandoning a portion of right-of-way alleyway located south of Abdella Street, north of Ivy Street, east of Matanzas Avenue, and west of Lincoln Avenue, within the plat of John H. Drew's first extension to northwest Tampa, a subdivision in the city of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida, as more particularly described in section one hereof, subject to certain easement reservations, covenants, conditions, and restrictions, as more particularly set forth herein, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Goode's, roll call vote.
Viera? Goode?
Yes.
Dean Felder?
Yes.
Meniscoco?
Yes.
Carlson?
No.
Citro?
Yes.
Miranda. Motion carried with Carlson voting no, Viera and Miranda being absent at vote.
Thank you very much. We go to our nine-thirty public hearings. We opened everything, so we're good to go. Item number fifty-two.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the council, this is Jan McLean with the Office of the City Attorney. We're here for the first of two public hearings for the designation of the Brownfield area. This application was submitted for a proposed Brownfield designation of property that's located generally at nineteen oh one North Sixty-sixth Street. The application was submitted to the city by the property owners and by Refocus Technologies LLC, requesting such designation, and the staff report and application has been presented, excuse me, has been placed with the city clerk's office. There's no action required by council today. There'll be a second public hearing where the request would be for the approval of the Brownfield designation.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions or comments from council members? Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number fifty-two? Do we have anybody at the kiosk or registered online?
We did not receive any registration for this item.
Move close.
We have a motion to close from Councilman Goode's. Do we have a second? Second from Councilmember Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Question, if I can, Mr. Chairman Martin Shelby?
Yes, sir.
Let me take off my mask. Ms. McLean, does this mean that no action needs to be taken, but the public, the second public hearing should be announced? Is that the action to be taken?
Yes, the second public hearing should, could be announced. I believe it's already scheduled for the evening meeting on December tenth.
So no further action needs to be taken today?
Right, I'm sorry.
No further act, I'm sorry?
No further action needs to be taken today.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you very much.
And, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, the second public hearing, December tenth at six P M.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Next up is item number fifty-three.
Yes, Mr. Chair and City Councilmember, Jan McLean with the Office of the City Attorney. This is the second Brownfield area designation for the first public hearing. Sorry for the confusion on that one. The application for this proposed Brownfield designation is for property located generally at one-two-three-seven East Twigs Street. The application was submitted to the city by the property owner, J. H. Williams Oil Company, and the site developer, E C I Ventures LLC, requesting such designation. The application and staff report is placed on file at the city clerk's office, and this will be as the previous one, the first public hearing. There's no action required by city council at this time. The second public hearing will have a request to approve the proposal for designation of the Brownfield.
Do we have any questions or comments? Do we have anybody? Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number fifty-three? Do we have anybody at the kiosk? Do we have anybody registered?
We did not receive any registrations for this item.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to close from Councilman Goode's. Do we have a second? Second from Councilman Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? No. Item number fifty-five, we did-
And, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, the second public hearing on item fifty-three will be December tenth, twenty-twenty, at six P M.
All right, and for item number fifty-four, there's a request that it be removed to the agenda due to the applicant withdrawing the application for designation. Can I get a motion to remove?
Move to remove.
Item number fifty-four, motion from Councilman Goode, second from Councilman Carlson, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, item number fifty-five.
Good afternoon, Council, Abby Feely, Director of Development and Growth Management. Item number fifty-five on your agenda today is a presentation of the one-year action plan. This plan is part of our five-year consolidated plan for federal funding that comes under our Housing and Community Development Department. This afternoon, I have with me Kayon Henderson, our Acting Manager of Housing and Community Development. She is going to make the presentation to you. Just to let you know, we did have this up on our website for a public comment period. That concluded, this is our public presentation to you today to be able to get additional public comment, and we will be back before you on December third in order to adopt the plan. So this is part of the process we actually do in the receipt and allocation of these funds and our consolidated strategic action plan. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Kayon.
Good afternoon. I am going to go over the action plan as Abby just stated. I have a PowerPoint presentation, I'm not sure if you guys have a copy of that.
There it is.
Hmm, we can see it, go ahead.
Oh, no, that's not it.
No, that's different.
Um, so.
No, that's the wrong one, hold on.
Looks like we're waiting. Ms. Feely, while we're waiting, while we're waiting, is there, is there action required for this, or is it just a motion to approve? What's the, what's the action you seek?
Um, we are, it's the motion to approve, as well as open it for any public comment, if there are any.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Henderson.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was thinking, Ms. Feely, there's a walk-on that relates to a memorandum that you prepared. I don't know whether you want to take that up after this while you're here.
Yeah, Ms. Feely, you have this item, the walk-on, would you like to take it up after this, since we have you on?
Um, Kayon is actually going to go ahead and address that walk-on at the latter part of her presentation. It does have to do with an allocation that is coming through on this action plan.
All right, great.
But we are prepared to address that now as well.
Okay, let's do that, and then I'll just, I'll just take public comment for fifty-five, and then this walk-on, we'll just do it all at once.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
Are we able to see the presentation? If not, I believe Kayon has it and could share her screen if that would make it more efficient.
We could give access to Kayon and share her screen because we never received the presentation. So give me one second.
Okay.
There it is.
All right, we got it.
Are you guys able to see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Maybe expand it out to the full screen, if possible.
Yes.
Beautiful.
All right, so we are going to go over the F Y twenty-one Housing and Community Development Annual Action Plan. As Abby stated, we are tasked with the action plan annually to, for all of our federal funds that we received. We'll touch also on the state funding that we received as it is a holistic approach to what we do for housing. The action plan is going to cover what projects we have upcoming for all the federal funds, the proposed activities that we would like to do for the upcoming year. We'll also touch, this item will also touch on the CARES Act and amend in what our action plan was for last year, because we received the funds, we had to do a substantial amendment to that action plan also, and then open it up for any public input. So the action plan, like I said, it does go over the activities and programs that will take place. It is our consolidated plan, we have a five-year consolidated plan, we are in year four of completing that, so once we do that consolidated plan, every year we get, make a step closer to actually fulfilling that goal in our consolidated plan. It's going to go over the different federal funding sources, home investment partnership, which is just home. It is going to talk about the different activities that we have. It can fund some new construction. It is also one of the big sources of our down payment assistance program for first-time home buyers, for our housing rehab, for those who are owner-occupied rehab that we assist, as well as a program that the city started a few years ago, tenant-based rental assistance. While home funds aren't necessarily earmarked for homelessness, we do put about eight-hundred thousand dollars in homeless services for those to get, for those who are actually homeless to get assisted in the city of Tampa limits, as well as some multifamily housing construction so that we can continue with some affordable housing within city of Tampa limits. We also have our Community Development Block Grant. That is C D B G, mostly you'll see listed as C D B G. That is, it funds a lot of different activities. We have our public services for those who are in the community that are looking for some services, it might just be a day stop that they need some rental assistance to move forward, economic development, public facilities, that might be a shelter that's funded, as well as any other multifamily unit. And then this is the source that we use to fund our housing counseling agencies. They are doing some rental counseling, they do the, also administer the program for our first-time home buyer program. And they were also the source that we use for our One-Tampa Relief, as we had those applications. The housing opportunities for people with AIDS is very unique because this is the only program that we have that doesn't only serve city of Tampa limits, it serves four counties, it serves Hillsborough, Pasco, Penneles, and Hernando. We have thirteen agreements coming up with this, and it will be eight different agencies. We will serve for tenant-based rental assistance. It's also the only program that allows us to pay some mortgage assistance. We'll have some supportive services, transitional housing, as well as permanent supportive housing. Our Emergency Solutions Grant, also known as E S G, that is specifically for homeless families or those who are at risk of homelessness. Because our funding allocation is not that great, it's about two-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand annually, we fund rapid rehousing and emergency shelter operations. That generally gives us about three agencies to be able to fund after we go through the procurement process. So this is just an overall of what the budget looks like for C D B G. We got roughly three-point-two million, home, we got one-point-seven million, Hopwa, four-point-one million, E S G, again, that's two-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand, and ship, which is our state fund, that's a little bit over four million dollars, giving us a total annual budget of thirteen-point-four million. Again, Hopwa being our largest allocation, but that is for four different counties. So the timeline for the request for application process, we started that process and had our first public hearing back May twenty-eighth. We did open the application in, I'm sorry, in April. We had a technical assistance workshop given, the pandemic, instead of having them being mandatory workshops where people had to come in, we taped workshops and put them on our website. We allowed the different agencies who are interested to ask questions on the fourteenth. Once they asked those questions, we could clarify any additional questions, and those were due back to us on April twentieth. We closed the application process on the fifteenth, so we allowed agencies about sixty days to apply because of the pandemic and people being out. We reviewed the different applications on May thirtieth. We're here today for the second public hearing, and then, as Abby stated, we'll be back on December third for the approval of the plan so that we can submit it to HUD to accept the funds. This year, we will be starting our fiscal year on December first, twenty-twenty, and again, we've, because of the pandemic, everything's kind of been pushed back and delayed, but we have gotten approval from HUD for that. So this is just some of the projects that we're looking at for housing projects. We'll be doing C D B G home and ship for about five-point-eight million dollars. We'll be doing some land acquisition for a little bit over a million, our public services, about five-hundred thousand. For the Hopwa program, we'll be doing a little bit over four million, E S G, two-seventy-two, some outreach and program delivery at four-thirty-one, and then just general admin costs at one-point-four. This number will look slightly different as these numbers are missing, the administrative amounts that will be for salaries. So some of the programs, housing counseling, we have four approved housing counseling agencies that will help us again with our first-time home buyer program, our DARE program. We pay the agencies to actually administer the program, about three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for the four different agency, which is separate from the actual down payment assistance that they receive. The demolition amount is listed. Any property acquisition, again, that's going to be from CDBG and home. We have Madison Heights that we'll be partnering with for 626. The down payment assistance that you see listed there, that, those are the funds that we'll use to help those who are looking for that gap funding as they look to purchase their, um, first home within the City of Tampa limits. Our TIBR program, which is, um, I listed earlier, that's our tenant-based rental assistance program. We use the home dollars while we don't have a large allocation from ESG. We still use some other funds to help with homeless issues. And then our owner-occupied rehab between CDBG and state funding, we're, um, looking at about $2 million to assist. Some of the different public services, we have Tampa Housing Authority, Catholic Charities, seniors in service, Metropolitan Ministries, and McDonald Training Center. Uh, out of these, four of them are helping with homelessness, rental assistance also. Given the pandemic, we really felt like we needed to address a lot of those issues that were going to be coming up. The housing counseling agencies are listed here, as well as the proposed, um, emergency solutions grant, the agencies that we fund. Um, they, for ESG, we have Don and Family Service. That was formerly Alpha House, who only dealt with, um, pregnant teens and young mothers, and now they're dealing with families to help those to rapidly rehouse or if they're at risk of homelessness, just trying to make sure that they maintain stable housing. The Spring, which is the DV shelter, domestic violence shelter that we have here in the City of Tampa, as well as Catholic charities. These are the proposed Hopwa program. Again, this is going over four different agencies. We do have quite a few tenant-based rental assistance programs that will also fund some permanent housing, um, and some transitional housing. The CARES Act amendment, um, given everything that started on March 27th, we did sign, um, it was signed that we would get some additional funds to prevent and prepare to respond to the COVID-19. We did get, this is just kind of the list of what we did with the funds and how much we got. We'd got 1.7 that we used for One Tampa Relief Phase 1, and that was used for, um, that was reg- regular CDBG entitlement funds that we had that we reallocated to help until we started getting CARES Act funding. We got 1.8 million for CV1, ESG CV1. We got a little, um, less than a million for HIV program. We got, uh, a little bit over half a million, and then for ESG CV2, we got three, uh, a little bit over $3 million. We are accepting now the CDBG CV3 allocation, which is, um, also a little bit over $3 million. The CARES Act amendment, the proposed project is, um, the One Tampa Relief program. Again, we did three different phases through that to help those who were critically impacted by losing their jobs and at risk of homelessness. So we were able to help to maintain those who were in their homes so that they did not become homeless. Hillsborough Hope, which will become Tampa Haven of Hope, which will be a holistic approach for those who come in as homeless individuals to make sure that there is a transition period before they get to permanent housing. We'll be doing rental housing rehab projects, some rapid rehousing and some shelter operations. As far as the walk-on that, um, Abby mentioned earlier, the rental housing rehab project, the walk-on item is for us to accept the additional funds, Phase 2, from the state so that we're able to assist with the rental housing rehab project. We understand that while some of, um, the individuals who didn't apply or couldn't apply for some funding were unable to pay rent, that left some landlords unable to make critical, um, critical repairs to their facilities. So we are doing a rental housing rehab project, one to just maintain some affordable units, as well as making sure that they are able to still have their tenants live in a safe, decent, and sanitary place. So the, again, just going over what the overview of the dates are. The public comment period that we had, we did post the, um, draft of the action plan on our website. We also published in three different newspapers that it would be on our website, that they were able to make public comment periods. They could have emailed any comments to me, or, as well as view the action plan on our website and view it if they couldn't go on the website, they could have viewed it either here at Lemon Street location as well as downtown location. We are here today for the public hearing, the second public hearing, and then we'll come before you again with the actual action plan and the, um, for FY '21 as well as substantial amendment. Any questions or comments?
Do we have any questions or comments?
It was chairman.
Councilman Goode.
Thank you, sir. You know, I, a lot of times I always get questions about these CDBG funds. Uh, and I notice you have rehab and rental rehab on there, and I've always talked about rehab in our communities. Now, these CDBG funds are primarily supposed to be used in low-density, uh, low-economic areas, correct?
I'm sorry, I missed the last part of what you said.
The, the criteria that, for the CDBG funds?
The criteria? For the CDBG funds?
Correct.
Okay. So the criteria for the CDBG funds, um, it is a project, the program can be used for various different things. A lot of that criteria then comes within housing division to set different parameters for the different program. The one criteria that housing can't change is that it must be for those who are at or below 80% of the area median income.
You got right to my question, Kayon, that's what I was wondering, because a lot of times when I look at our rehab program, I see that's a problem with that situation. Uh, and that's why I always talked about the CRA with rehab and looking at some other funding to go into different form for rehab, because I think we can do a lot in some of these, uh, areas with a lot of the property that we do have, uh, that's just sitting abandoned to, to put people in housing. A lot of these buildings that we have that are sitting abandoned, put people in these buildings. So I'm hoping that housing in the future will look at that, uh, the stock that we do have, especially, you know, a lot of our low-income areas, East Tampa, a little bit of West Tampa, especially in, in North Tampa, Silver Springs, that things are just sitting abandoned in buildings that are sitting abandoned. So I'm hoping in the future that we can look at that, because I think that's going to be a key to helping with some of our housing projects and housing problems.
Agreed.
Anybody else? All right. Uh, is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item? Anybody at the kiosk or registered? Hearing none?
If we can close the public hearing.
Move closer, Jim.
Councilman Dingfelter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, no, I just wanted to give a shout-out to, uh, to the department and everybody involved in this. Ms. Henderson and, uh, and Vanessa McCreary, and, uh, and Abby, as of recently, and Carol, and, and the whole, the whole lineup. Um, there's a lot of complications associated with all these different programs and all these state and federal regulations, and how they keep them straight, I have no idea. But, um, but I think we're doing, we're doing a good job with the limited amount of money that we have, and, uh, now our challenge is to try and find more money. But, uh, I just want to give them a shout-out for, uh, for what they do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They have a lot of work, Mr. Dingfelter.
Thank you, Mr. Dingfelter. Um, once you, you, uh, if you do go ahead and, um, open the presentation up, if there were any public comments on the presentation, and then also on the WAFON item, if we could get you to, uh, make a motion for approval on that resolution, accepting the additional funds that are coming from the state. Those are going to go to our rental rehab program. We're going to launch that program, um, tomorrow. That is for, uh, multifamily projects that need assistance in making those, uh, improvements. Um, so that will be an open process that is going to launch. We'll bring in those applications, we will evaluate them, and then we will appropriate those funds here, uh, really in the next 30 days. So, uh, this is a critical component for us. We do appreciate you taking the walk-on today, uh, as we move forward to get those funds and be able to allocate them in our community.
All right. Well, I already asked for public comment, there was none. Um... We have a motion to close, uh, by Councilman Goode. Do we have a second? Second from Councilman Carlson, all in favor? All right, there's a walk-on here, a resolution that needs to be read.
No, just moved.
Oh, may I have someone move the resolution?
Move the resolution.
We have a motion from Councilman Citro, second from Councilman Goode, all in favor? Any opposed?
And, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, that is on the addendum under new business, and it's file number E...
2020-48.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, all right.
And, and how about 55, she didn't need a motion on that?
No, because it's going to be coming back, uh, under the next steps she set forth, is that correct?
Yeah.
Correct, it's coming back on the third.
An adoption of public hearing?
Okay.
All right, we go to staff reports. We'll begin with item number 58, which is an administration update.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask if you would inquire as to whether you want to take up the last item on the consent document, which is number 13?
Oh, well, I was going to go to this first, but yeah, let's take item number 13. We have a gentleman in the audience. Um, this was pulled by Councilmember Carlson. Item number 13 regarding a second amendment to the earmarked food service agreement.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to hold this up, and I don't want, we don't need to take a lot of time on it. Um, just, people who know me know that I was a watchdog, uh, on the last administration, and, um, there were many allegations and accusations about, um, purchasing and other practices of the last administration. And one of the, um, case studies most often held up was this original RFP. Um, if you go back and look in the, uh, archives, you'll see that, um, there were several media stories where competitors, uh, didn't feel like the city handled the, um, the RFP correctly. And then at some point in the RFP process, um, part of the, uh, part of the, the, um, space that was supposed to be allocated, the, the one that was the former History Center space, was suddenly taken out with apparently no explanation, which would have changed the whole RFP process. And then also, there was a construction project for one of the out parcels where the winning vendor was supposed to have been able to handle that, and it, and suddenly the city yanked that from them, and, um, uh, that affected the, the winning bidder's, uh, MBE criteria. Um, I've, I've spoken, I just want to be on the record, I've spoken to staff, and whatever happened in the past, uh, there has been, haven't been no protests, and, um, it has no, uh, bearing on this particular renewal. Um, I just wanted to state, uh, that, uh, you know, I had concerns about the past. I inquired about it, and it, um, it, uh, the, I believe that the staff and everyone has been through a, a very good, sound process, um, on, in this process, and that the, you know, the vendors and the city staff have all done a good job, uh, doing that. But I have, um, asked Chief Bennett, uh, to maybe work with me offline to look at what happened in the past and just try to get some answers on that. So... With that, um, I would just, uh, say, let's vote.
Would you like to go ahead and move that item?
Sure.
Just move the resolution for item number 13.
Question?
Yes, Councilman Dingfelter?
Thanks. Uh, I totally have, have no problems with item 13, but as long as, as long as, uh, Convention Center staff is here, could you give us a, a sixty-second update on, on how things are going? Uh, are people starting to rebook again? Um, you know, where, where, I know, I know you all have suffered, um...
Yes.
...financially and et cetera over the last, you know, since March, so, uh, where are we at?
Yes.
Where are we headed?
Good afternoon, Una Garvey, Convention Center and Tourism Director. Um, yeah, we have actually had some challenges, uh, but one of the things that we've been really proud of is that we've actually repurposed our facility, not only for city council chambers, but for many other events, um, throughout these several months, keeping, um, somewhat of a small economy going, as well as keeping some of our employees employed throughout the venue. And so, um, the good news is, is that, um, despite COVID and despite some of the, um, early 2021, um, cancellations that we're beginning to just experience, um, we are very, very optimistic, and the numbers that we receive from visiting Tampa Bay, our partners in the hotel community all indicate that we are going to be, uh, over 100% of our occupancy as the year goes on. And let's not forget that this contract particularly goes all the way through '26, and those future years where we have actually moved events to from this past year, we actually moved 85% of our events that have canceled into future years, all the way through '26 and '27. And, uh, that's a kudos to our, uh, community and our relationships that we have with our clients. And so, this whole contract that you're getting ready to approve for renewal is actually going to be affected in a very, very good way. We're very, very optimistic about our future.
You got a lot on your hands as related to the, um, improvements that will occur over the next couple of years as well. Thank you for your hard work, Ms. Carvey.
You're welcome.
So we had a motion from Councilman Carlson to move item thirty, thirteen. Second from Councilman Dingfelter, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Next up, we go into staff reports with item number 58, administration update. You don't have anything? All right. Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember. Um, item number 59, if there are no questions, I believe they were answered earlier with the discussion on, uh, some of the other police items. May I have a motion to move the resolution for item 59?
Uh, Vera, so move.
Vera with the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Goode, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, thank you very much. Item number 60, it's part of the same, part two of two. Can I get a motion to move the resolution?
Uh, Vera, move.
Councilman Vera with the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Goode, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, item number 61, $4.1 million contract. Do we have any questions from council members? Councilman Dingfelter, you had, uh, concerns on 61?
Um, well, as, as usual, um, I wanted to, uh, speak to the WMBI component, of both 61 and 62, and get some clarification on that, as well as 63. And, um, and also, I noticed in, I can't remember which one, one of these three, that there was also, um, some training, a training component, um, sort of like apprentice, uh, component, Mr. Vera. And, um, and I thought that was worth, uh, a quick discussion. I know we're, we're late in the afternoon, but, uh, is Mr. Bday, there he is. It's, the, the caption says Gene Duncan, but, uh, I think that's Mr. Bday.
Yes, sir, uh, I'm in the office with Gene, and I'll be happy to clarify. Thank you, Councilman Vic Bday, Mobility Department, uh, addressing items 61, uh, actually, 61 through 64. So 61 and 62 are related to, uh, the Columbus Drive project, uh, which was awarded, uh, to Nelson. This project is, uh, partially funded by FDOT and federal funds, uh, which, uh, require that we do the workforce development component, uh, and that is true also for the 46th, uh, Street project, which are items 63 and 64. Both have workforce development, both have, uh, uh, WMBI targets. Both have met the targets for the requirement. Uh, uh, for Columbus, the target for workforce development based on the contract amount, uh, is for a minimum of three trainees. And where possible, uh, or where feasible, at least 25% of all trainees in each occupation, uh, will be in their first year of training. That is, uh, an attempt that the contractor will make. Uh, and as far as, uh, 46th Street, uh, which is being awarded to Gosalia, uh, and we've accepted, uh, their proposal, uh, the, the workforce development requirement is for a minimum of two trainees, again, based on contract amount, and also, where feasible, 25% of all trainees in each occupation, uh, will be in their first year of training. So it does move the city's workforce development objectives forward, and we're in compliance with, uh, EDO targets, and in fact, we exceed them.
Yeah, um, Mr. Chairman, I'll just follow up. Um, thank you, Ms. Bday. Um, no, I, I think it's very exciting, um, uh, that we can start working on our workforce, uh, development and training, and I give Mr. Bennett a, and Mayor Castor a shout-out for, uh, that progress. I, I wanted to make reference, Mr. Bday, on your memo as related to our WMBI. The WMBI participation, it was a little hard to dig out, um, on all four of these. Can you run through some of those, um, with us? It looks like we have good DBE participation, um, on the one, is 66%. But unfortunately, as usual, I'm not seeing a lot of, uh, BBE, black business participation.
So we are following, uh, state and federal requirements here, uh, and for the Columbus Drive project, uh, we have an overall project participation of 26% uh, out of the five subcontractors that the contractor identified. Two were DBE and two were WMBI certified. Uh, and that's what accounts for that total of 26%. Uh, 25.3% of that represents certified HPE slash SLB for our criteria. Uh, and that's for, uh, Columbus. And for the 46th Street project, uh, again, we have a total participation uh, of 66%, like you said, and that represents DBEs, uh, uh, and then 33% for HPEs as well.
But, but no, no BBE, black business, or?
Uh, so it is a race-neutral policy when we look at, uh, federal and state requirements.
But there, but there is still an opportunity for, for reporting, isn't it? I mean, I thought I...
Yes, sir, so I should have clarified. Thank you for, uh, mentioning that both projects have reporting requirements. So at the end of the contract, we will, uh, require the contractor to submit reports, and we will make those reports available to council.
Anything else, sir?
No. What, would, would there be a, a date that you can come back and, and give us the updates on those? How long are these contracts in place for? A year or so, or what?
So the term of the contract is through the end of the project, and that is determined by project schedule. And they're approximately eighteen months, both of them, in terms of construction.
All right. Well, we'll just count on you to, to be at your word as always and, and give us a report back when you're done. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Councilman Goode's.
You know, I wasn't gonna make a stink, and I didn't call Vic at all. I looked at all of, all those items. And Mr. Gene was like, you never see that BBE there at all. And when, and when we look at the process, I still think we're, we're saying we're meeting a goal, but we're missing a piece of meat there somehow. We're still missing a piece because we always say, well, we're meeting the guidelines. But I don't think we're meeting really all of the guidelines. I think we're, we're, we're trying to just touch and go situation. I'm not gonna vote no on, on the items today. I know we've got a workshop going up, and I've been talking to other plea people and surrounding states and counties in reference to how they operate, so we don't miss that, that piece of meat, the piece of salami on the sandwich. I still think there's, there's opportunities that we are missing as it relates to all minorities, not just black, in, in these contracts, especially when you're talking about these high-dollar contracts, because you just can't tell me, we can't find folks who can lay concrete and lay asphalt on roads out there. You just can't tell me that. And I just think that we have to look at the, the, the whole process holistically. And to me, we're just still missing a piece of the meat on the sandwich. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I yield back. But I also put them today, but again, I don't want to hold the contracts up. You know, we've been doing that, and hopefully, we're gonna have some results to come back with. Hopefully, when we get our EBO ordinance with our audit in reference to the program and some of the workshop that we can look at what other people are doing so we don't miss the, the mark. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Vera.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I, we all, obviously, I think here on city council, want diversity on our contracts, and, and I agree with those sentiments, obviously. I did want to point out, though, some of the areas these, these projects are going to be serving, North Nebraska, East Columbus area, as well as the walk-bike initiative and the complete streets initiative at the Forty-Sixth Street from Bush and Fowler. And I believe this also includes around about at Bogan Villa area. And this is something that the folks on Bush and Fowler, very diverse community economically, culturally, racially, ethnically, et cetera, have really been looking forward to. So I just, I did want to point out these, these projects that I think are stellar. And I did want to point out, without harping on it too much, as, and I know Councilman Dingfelder mentioned this not too long ago, that we are holding half a billion dollars in funds from the All for Transportation penny sales tax because of the lawsuit. And, you know, the, these great projects, as wonderful as they are, we could be doing fifty times that if we had that money available. So I, I did want to give a shout out to these programs or to these projects substantively. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? If there's no one else, who would like to move the resolution?
So move. Do we do all three at once, Mr. Chair, or?
We have part one and two, sixty-one and sixty-two.
You also have, I believe, two more, is that right?
Yeah, then the sixty-three and sixty-four.
I'll move sixty-one.
We have motion from Councilman Vera, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Who would like to move item sixty-two?
All move sixty-two.
We have motion from Councilman Vera, second from Councilman Citro, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
All move sixty-three.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Vera with a second from Councilman Citro, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Any opposed? Item number sixty-four, Councilman Vera, you want to finish it off?
All move sixty-four.
Second.
We have motion from Councilman Vera with a second from Councilman Citro, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Item number sixty-five is a part one of two with sixty-six.
So we got, we got all four of those, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, and sixty-four?
Yes, sir. And we have a memo from Mr. O'Hara, our CFO, transmitting a summary report for these agenda items. If there are no questions, can I have a motion to move item sixty-five?
So move.
We have a motion from Councilman Citro. Do we have a second?
Second with a comment.
Second. Dingfelder, go ahead, sir.
The, these negotiations between us and the county, they're never easy, but I just wanted to give a shout out to the county. They are the pass-through agency for these large CARES dollars. And apparently, they're giving us an additional ten million dollars to be able to distribute throughout the city for various purposes. So anyway, I, I just think it shouldn't go unspoken, you know, that we have a cooperative and friendly relationship with the new county administrator, Ms. Wise, and her staff, and everybody's playing nice. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So we have a motion from Councilman Citro, I believe, with a second from Councilman Dingfelder, all in favor. This is item sixty-five. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Sixty-five and sixty-six together or?
Well, we'll take it separate. Do we have a motion from sixty-six?
Move sixty-six.
We have a motion from Councilman Citro. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Carlson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Item number sixty-seven.
Was taken care of, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, and item sixty-eight as well.
Yes.
And item number sixty-nine, we heard from a gentleman during public comment, Mr., I'm sorry, Reverend Willie Dixon. And we have a memo from Jorge Martine transmitting a report. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none.
I think, I think number sixty-nine there is, is an in-person, what is it?
I'm sorry? Sixty-nine what?
Isn't sixty-nine an in-person?
I believe Mr. Massey is available, and he's online, if you look at your screen. Mr. Massey-
There he is.
Oh, there he is. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mas.
Yes, sir. Mr. Martine is, had an appointment, so I'm taking over this agenda item for him. We did distribute a memorandum to you all previously regarding the information that Reverend Dixon provided to you, I believe in September and October. The purpose of the memorandum was to show you that we were looking at his claims and looking at the information he provided to us substantively. There is also a statute of limitations issue as well because of the age of the transactions to which he is referring. We also looked at the information that he provided to all of you all yesterday, and I listened to his presentation this morning. And we respectfully do not believe that there is a valid legal claim, really, that, that Coach has against the city at this point in time. As city council is aware, any contractual claim, any claim for a breach of contract under our city charter, the contract must be in writing, approved by city council, and signed by the mayor. And we just haven't seen that type of documentation from Coach. And really, understanding that he may not agree with that assessment, really, his, the proper recourse for, for Reverend Dixon and Coach at this point in time is really through the court system if he disagrees with that assessment. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer those, but that, that's our report.
Councilman Goode.
Yeah, let me, so make it clear for the record. Mrs. Massey and Mr. Martine has had a conversation, but I just want to be clear, because I knew this been going on for a while, Mr. Massey, even with the last administration-
Yes, sir.
Last council. But for, just for my clarification, the documents that were provided do not match any records that we have. We can't locate any records that the Coach Foundation is alleging that should have had a transaction, correct?
I can find, we have found no documentation showing that there was a contract that says what Reverend Dixon really says, is represented to you all verbally. And the documents he provided, we do not believe amount to that type of contract, contract. And so, we do not believe that he's presented anything that is a valid legal claim against the city in connection with those transactions, sir.
All right. So statute of limitations to coincide with any documents, we still can't find or locate, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. So at this point, the Coach Foundation will need to do what they need to do to validate whatever records they say they have, or possibly where they may be to come up with, for us to even look at if this even possibly happened, or, you know-
Yes, sir. And, and really, unless he has some different information that he's provided over, and he's made this, the, the same sort of presentation, as I understand, from Mr. Martine over the last three or four years. So if he's got some different information, obviously, we'll look at it. But if he doesn't really, if he still thinks he has a valid legal claim, he really needs to assert that to the courts at this point in time.
Thank you, sir. You best to chairman.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Dingfelder.
Mr. Massey?
Yes, sir.
There you are. In, in his letter dated September seventh, Reverend Dixon makes reference to a, a claim possibly being time-barred with a statute of limitations, a reference statute of limitations, ninety-five, two thirty-one Florida statutes, ever since two thousand eight. I, I guess I, I want to hear what you have to say about that because, you know, if, if at some point, he had a legitimate claim against the city, and then for some reason or another, it became time-barred, you, you know, I guess my concern is perhaps from a moral, a moral perspective, if, if we owed somebody the money and, and they, they didn't get it, you know, maybe that's something we need to revisit. But I'm not saying that's necessarily the case, because I don't see, in your memorandum, I don't see you making any reference to statute of limitations. I, I only see that being referenced in his letter. So if you're following me, because I'm rambling a little bit this late in the afternoon, but if you're following me, you know, did he have a valid claim as related to any of these matters that is now time-barred?
We don't believe so. And that was the purpose of the memorandum. He made a formal claim, I believe in two thousand nineteen, to the city of Tampa. And our response was any potential claim was barred by the statute of limitations. When he came forward again to you all with the, the information he provided you, we looked at the information without referring to the statute of limitations. We wanted, as you stated, Councilman Dingfelder, to see if, you know, putting the statute of limitation issue aside, whether there was some valid claim based on the information he provided. So we looked at it as if there was no statute of limitations issue, and we could not find a legal basis for a claim at this point in time based on the information he provided us.
Okay. Well, I, I think it's really important to, to clear that up for the record to, because we don't want to just hide behind legal, technical, technicalities. We want to do, we always want to try and strive and do the right thing. But in this case-
Yes, sir.
For whatever reason, our research is contrary to his conclusions, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Goode, for bringing this up.
Councilman Carlson.
Mr. Massey, since it's not in litigation, this morning, I, I thought I heard him say, and I, and I've spoken to him, he's sent emails to him, but this morning, I thought I heard him say, this or other properties. I know we have properties that we're using to partner with other organizations. Is it possible, since we're not in litigation, that we could put him in touch with a department to see if, if, if there is some-
He's, yes, sir. I mean, he, he, he can work with our staff at HCD and respond to RFPs and proposals. I think Coach has done that in the past. And that would be the appropriate vehicle if he wants to partner with the city on projects in now or in the future.
Is there, is there someone in, somebody, tell me if this is appropriate or not, is there someone in that department who we could make a motion to ask to coach him or guide him?
I, I don't, I'm not sure of the exact person, but you just heard from, you know, the acting manager of HCD, Kayon, and, and from Abby Feely, who's the director over that. So if he wants to reach out to them, if, if, if they have RFP opportunities or programming opportunities, that he would have to go through the city process and, and, and try to partner with the city as we partner with the other not-for-profits in our, in our housing programs.
I, I think, I think Mr. Goode's brought this up, so if he wants to make this motion, he could. But, but if, if my colleagues wanted, maybe we could just make a motion to, to ask staff to talk to him about the, about the possibilities or, or technical aspects of applying for RFP in the future.
Well, I think Mr. Massey's already here. They're already working on, working on the case. And I, I think that, you know, we all want to make sure that, you know, Reverend Dixon's a long, life's in Tampa. He's always working in the community to build and do things for the community. We want to make sure that if, if a deal was verbal deal back in the day, we don't know about it, because, you know, back in that day, we did have some housing issues and some people went to jail. And some deals might have been made, we don't know about. And, and people feel a certain kind of way and think the city may still owe them because certain people said those things back in the day, but they're no longer with the city. So we can't validate something we, what they didn't hear and know about. And so, that, that situation, I do feel bad about. But if Mr. Massey could get with housing and get with the, get with maybe Ms. Feely and get with Ms. Henderson to maybe set up a point with Reverend Dixon to see what we can do as far as helping with his foundation and, and what we can do to help him move along, I think that'll be a nice gesture on the city's part, Mr. Massey.
Yes, sir. I will definitely ask HCD to reach out to him and see what opportunities exist and how they can, how the city might partner with him in the future.
Thank you for the cooperation, Mr. Massey. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up is item number seventy, a motion by Councilmember Carlson.
That's also Mr. Massey.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Mas.
Yes, sir. This is in response to a motion made by Councilman Carlson requesting that we prepare an ordinance that would require that when we provide economic development incentives to companies, that, that typically, they must provide reporting information to us, that they do so under a sworn affidavit so that we have an, an officer testing to the accuracy of the information that's provided. That is the, the purpose of this ordinance. I have spoken with Councilman Carlson. I think one of the last exception that we provided for tax exemptions that are not related to economic development incentives, he'd like for us to remove the last portion of that phrase, including without limitation, historic preservation. And I can strike that. That's, it doesn't really have a material effect on, on what we're doing. And there are a couple other types that need to be fixed. But we're here, I'm here to hear any other questions or comments and, and hopefully getting this finalized so we can get this to you December third for first reading.
Councilman Carlson.
No, thank, thank you, thanks to you and, and Carol Post for researching this and coming up with that. I think this is critically important to making sure that we are able to reinvent economic development and make it effective where the numbers show it hasn't been in the past. But in particular, if, if we're gonna give any kind of incentive, monetary incentive or rebate, we ought to make sure that people follow the guidelines that, or follow what, whatever they promise. So thank you all for doing that and look forward to having it come back.
All right. No, no, that was it.
Just a question for Mr. Massey. Mr. Massey, will then this be processed through your office to appear on the December third agenda for first reading?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We'll, we'll, we'll process it and have it placed up on the agenda for first reading for December, on the December third agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number seventy-one was continued to February. Item number seventy-two, we have a resolution initiated by Councilmember Vera.
So move.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dingfelder. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Citro, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Item number seventy-three, I think everything was addressed this morning, correct, Councilman Citro?
Yes. No, it, no, it was moved till January fourteenth at nine P.M.
All right. Staff reports.
Staff reports. Thank you very much, Council.
That's right. Item number seventy-four is a request for a sixty-day continuance. It'll come in the February twenty-fifth workshop at ten-thirty A.M.
Question. I'll, I'll move the continuance. I have a question on the continuance.
Okay, go ahead.
If that's okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Is Ms. Feely still online?
Yes, I am.
Abby. I, I realize the noise ordinance and enforcement, et cetera, is a complicated issue, and, and that's why I'm, I'm glad to move your, your sixty-day continuance request. But as related to that specific establishment in Channel Side, are we still proceeding with any type of short or long-term enforcement actions? I, I think if we just say, well, we'll, we'll just hang out for sixty days, we're gonna have, we'll have some unhappy people through the holidays that live upstairs. we're going to have, we'll have some unhappy people through the holidays that live upstairs.
Well, I can give you a brief update on that. We did have a call with the management team. There have been some sound mitigation mechanisms that they are working on. In addition, as was brought to your attention, the outside speakers were in the process of being removed. I believe they have been removed. I'm not sure if Susan Johnson Velez is on this afternoon with me. She has been heading up a lot of those efforts. They did remove those speakers from the outside area, so there should not be any amplified sound occurring outside, which is now in compliance or, I don't believe it has been complied, but would bring that property more into compliance with the regulations that are on the property. I believe they are also undertaking additional efforts to work with the neighbors within the building to try to impose additional sound mitigation. So those efforts are still being undertaken under that enforcement. Really, what I was asking for was the ability to do some additional research for you, especially in relation to the items that were brought up week before last to see what other municipalities are doing, and come back to you in that workshop in February to really provide to you some options as well as some, the findings of research so that you could make some comprehensive decisions.
Maybe I'll modify my motion slightly to ask you to come back to us in December as related to that particular establishment, just to continue to give us updates and maybe
Oh, sure.
reach out to some of those folks who live in that building to make sure, you know, see how that relationship is going and if it's continuing to improve. And the only other question I had, and Mr. Goode's might be able to help me on this, the gentleman who spoke to us very emotionally about the boom, 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 boom boxes driving by his,
That's Mr. Clay Daniels.
Yes, sir.
He's down.
And I remember him from many years ago. He's been pretty consistent on being upset about the boom, I don't know what they call them, the boom, the big bases in people's cars. Anyway, is that a, is that a particular part of East Tampa that suffers from that? Or is that, do, you know, are there a lot of neighborhoods, I guess, that are dealing with that issue? And does our code, I guess I'm asking you, Ms. Feeley, as well as Mr. Goode's, you know, does our code adequately address that or?
Let me put it this way, Mr. Dingfelder, you know, in certain communities, loud music is a big thing. Some people don't like loud music. And Mr. Daniels is right. Sometimes that noise is pretty loud, some of those cars. It's like anything. You can go to other parts of the city and people have vehicles and the noise is loud from amplified sound in their inside speakers. But, you know, there is, there's an issue with noise in East Tampa. I hear complaints all the time. Just don't know how to really fix the problem because, you know, by the time the police get there, that car could be gone. They can't find that car. So, you know, I don't know what else we can do. If we get them, we can sign them. I don't know what else we can really work on. Maybe there's answers that, in some other city that has a better fix than we have right now. So maybe something we can look at and look around and see what somebody else has that's working. But it's just a tough battle right now.
Ms. Zelman, you're legal counsel that I see here today remaining. Everybody else has given up on us. But do you recall or do you know, does the noise ordinance right now currently have address moving violations and decibels as related to, you know, music coming out of cars?
I honestly don't know offhand. I can look at the code real quick and respond in a few minutes if you'd like.
Ms. Zelman, if you could.
One other thing.
Ms. Zelman?
Yes.
And if you could, while we're on this, there are complaints coming from other parts of the cities also. Ebor City and downtown especially about the noise level coming from motorcycles. So I being a motorcycle rider myself, I don't, I really don't want to bring it up, but there are those complaints also. Can you check on those as well?
I will, yes.
One last thing. I don't know, Ms. Feeley, are you working with Attorney Schmidt and Simone in reference to the complaint I gave to Mr. Massey? Reference to the church that had the music amplified sound?
I am not aware of a church with amplified sound issues. That has not been brought to my attention as of yet. In re, so if we need to follow up on that or you need to provide that information to me, I'm happy to take a look at that.
Well, since you got the noise answered.
Or get involved with the team that is addressing that. In relation to the certain establishment that you're trying to report back on, would you like that on December 3rd?
Well, I know they're working on something because we had a complaint and the police went out to one of the pastors and thankfully they called me today about it again. I thought they probably would have been down the road that so far. But apparently, a lot of churches through COVID-19 are having services outside.
Yeah.
And, you know, with the outdoor air and the music is up a little bit. And there was an incident that happened and it got called to my attention. I did call District 3 and talk to legal about it in reference to the church members. They went onsite and saw some ordinances and I think those orders were outdated until they researched and make sure they're not there anymore. And also looking about the, I guess, church versus state situation when I guess it was churches were exemption in pass, but now somehow that's out of our ordinance exemption. So just want to figure out if you were part of that and also if that's the case, during that workshop, bring us back something because a lot of churches are outside now and, you know, I don't want to be dealing with a lot of church issues, dealing with the church folks with music. So I want to see what we can do, what we can't.
Understood. And we'd be happy to, I'll call it back on that item and if not, we will incorporate that into the discussion that will take place as we discuss more of a comprehensive approach to noise for the city.
Thank you.
Councilman Goode, this is Morris Massey in legal. I just wanted to assure you that I had spoken to Simone about this and she has spoken to Susan Johnson Velez and she's aware that this is an issue that needs to be included and addressed as part of the overhaul of the noise ordinance as well. So, but I'll make sure that the legal part of it coordinates with Ms. Feeley and her staff as well.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Massey. Thank you as always.
Do we need any official motions on this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If I may, through the wonders of modern technology, I have the code on my phone and I've gotten three text messages from our staff, as well as Chief Bennett found the state statute on his phone. Our code at section 14, 155, does prohibit unreasonably excessive noise from a vehicle. And we define that as any sound which is plainly audible at a distance of 50 feet or more from the vehicle at the time it is heard. So that is already a violation of our noise ordinance. And then Chief Bennett handed me a state statute, which makes it illegal for someone to have amplified sound that's plainly audible at a distance of 100 feet or more from the vehicle. So under both state statute and our code, it would be illegal to have excessive noise coming from a motor vehicle.
And what's the remedy for the police officer who pulls up next to a car that clearly is in violation of either the state or the local? Anybody?
Well, it would appear they could cite them under the Florida statute. It's a non-criminal traffic infraction. And then, of course, under our code, it would be, they would be able to cite them under our code, section 14-155.
Ms. Zelman?
On that 14-155, is that?
14-155.
Thank you very much. Is that amplified sound? Or is that sounds coming from the motors also?
It simply says unreasonably excessive noise that is plainly audible from a vehicle.
So it's not?
Any, I mean, sound from any vehicle.
I think there is a statute.
So that's not only amplified, but that could also be the motor sound itself?
Correct.
Thank you.
That's the way I read that.
Anybody else? Do we need any motions on this or will it just come?
Yes, we do.
All right. Who would like to make the motion?
I've got a pending, pending motion on the 68 continuance.
Number 74?
Number 74.
Number 74.
And what did you say?
February 25th, 2021 at 10:30 AM is the request of Ms. Feeley. And I don't believe there was a second to that.
Is that workshop open, available?
Yes, it is. It's something you said today for 9 o'clock, but 10:30 would be good.
Okay. So moved.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
And now Mr. Dingfelder raised another issue for a follow-up in December.
December 3rd?
The channel district issue. Is that correct, Councilman?
Right. Ms. Feeley, do you have any suggestions? Are you okay with coming back to us at our December meeting? What did, what did you say, the 3rd or the?
The 3rd was.
We have it getting rather full, but I don't know.
Would be the 3rd or the 17th?
Yeah, the 17th would be fine.
If that is my example, no problem.
Yeah. Just a quick in-person discussion and update on the enforcement actions or the cooperation actions as related to that Channel Side. What's it called? Parks and Rec? Parks and Rec.
That is correct.
Thank you. That's my motion.
We have a motion for Councilman Dingfelder. Do we have a second? Second from Councilmember Citro. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Item number 75, there was also a request to continue that to December 3rd, I believe.
I believe it was. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Do we need a motion?
It was already done under the.
Already done? Okay. That concludes our agenda. However, we still have new business. Councilman Citro, do you have anything at this time, sir?
Nothing today, Councilman.
Councilman Carlson. Thank you. Councilman Carlson?
Just quickly, two things. Thank you all months ago for approving and recommending the Economic Advisory Committee. I sat in the last meeting of that group yesterday. Remember, the mayor, Carol Post graciously offered to lead that, what's happening? Carol Post graciously offered to lead that along with USAB. And they came to some really good conclusions. They're going to come back to us in, I think, February, March with a presentation, but thanks to everybody for that. Also, after, what was it, last week's meeting, we were talking about the environment. I met with Sierra Club and some other groups and I talked to them about their long-term plan, what they're planning. They're coming back to us, I think, in March with the proposal that Councilman Citro had made. But in the conversation, they talked about coming before us for a 10-minute presentation to present kind of the holistic picture of all the things that they would like over the next few years. And so I'd like to, I can read it off and make a motion to schedule that. Mr. Citro would like to do it. He's welcome to do it instead or he can second it.
You've already started. Please, go ahead.
But the purpose of that is just to try to get information out there so the business community and others can see, you know, what the long-term plan is and what all the different elements are that they're going to propose so that they can engage in a dialogue. So I would like to make a motion that we ask the Sierra Club to make a 10-minute presentation under staff reports. I propose on January 14th to present their vision for protecting the environment and building sustainability in Tampa.
I will second that. And I will also let the record reflect that Nicholas Glover, who is with the chamber, has already set up a meeting with the larger corporations and some of the smaller businesses to also discuss the same thing.
And did you want that 10-minute presentation under ceremonial at the start of the meeting?
Do you want to start it off with that?
Staff reports? Staff reports, we, one does not know, presently we can have this discussion, but one does not know when staff reports begin.
At the beginning of the meeting after a public comment?
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, for January 14th, you said?
Yes, is that okay?
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Councilman Citro with the second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Dingfelder?
Nothing today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman, thank you, sir. Councilman Goode?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, thank you for your leadership again as usual. Just want to say Happy Thanksgiving to all our constituents out there, the citizens of Tampa. We won't be here next Thursday, but I want to wish everyone out there a Happy Thanksgiving. There are a couple of venues that will be giving away food for the holidays. If you're inclined to do so, you can go by Mount Zion Church at 26th Street in Columbus. The East Tampa Civic Association with Representative Diana Hart will be giving away baskets of food, turkeys and so forth. Also Pastor Tom Jones will also have a food giveaway for Thanksgiving at the Cyrus Green Recreational Center on this Saturday. Both of those programs are this Saturday, so if you're in need, we want to make sure everyone can have some for Thanksgiving. And again, Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you very much. Councilman Vera, do you have any new business at this time?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just really quick if I may. Number one, setting a date for a previously made motion made to provide a commendation to the Honorable Pat Frank. Ms. Frank is available to receive the commendation virtually at the regular city council session on December 3rd, 2020.
We have motion from Councilman Vera with a second from Councilman Dingfelder. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
Yes, sir. Secondly, I motion for a commendation to be given at Tampa City Council to Judges Rex Barbis and Nick Nazariton for serving as Santa at the Lawyers Autism Awareness Foundation sensory-friendly event for the last 10 years. This year will be 10 years, it's a foundation that I helped found with some friends of mine 10 years ago and time flies.
Yes, sir.
Oh, yes, sir?
No, no, no. Go ahead. Finish. I'm sorry.
And so this is going to be the 10th year that Judges Nick Nazariton, Circuit Court Judge, and Circuit Court Judge Rex Barbis will have served as our Santas. So I wanted to have them here. I believe that other judges will very likely be here on December 17th if I may during ceremonial.
That's how I meant, that's how I meant Judge Nazariton as a Santa Claus 10 years ago. Yep.
Yeah. And it's funny, Judge Nazariton is something of a professional Santa Claus. He goes to migrant worker camps all over. And then Judge Rex Barbis, I remember when I put this together 10 years ago, I called up his brother Steve Barbis, who's an Assistant City Attorney, one of the best people I know, and asked him, would your brother be offended if I asked him to be Santa Claus? And I said, why? And he said, why? And I said, well, you know, it's a big guy to be Santa Claus. Yeah, but we're proud of the work they do.
We have a second from Councilman Citro?
I will second that with the request that they both show up dressed as Santa Claus during the commendation.
I support that. Any?
What day is that? I'm sorry. What day?
The 17th.
And is that in person or do they want to come in virtually?
Yes, they do. Yep. They want to come in live if they may.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman, you're sort of ruining it for me. I thought that was really Santa Claus.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
And I'm so sorry, one I just really quickly forgot about. I motion for a commendation to the Freedom High School girls swim team who came in second at the Class 3A Region 2 championship recently. This will be given offsite at Freedom High School.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Vera with a second from Councilmember Citro. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Anything else, sir?
Happy Thanksgiving.
I did have one more.
Councilman Dingfelder?
Thank you. I forgot. I wanted to give a commendation to a Boy Scout, a new Eagle Scout, Luke Wizicki. And just, he's worked very hard. He had some health issues of his own, not COVID-related, but had health issues of his own that he worked through and managed to continue on his great achievement to Eagle Scouts. So we'll prepare the commendation and present it separately and elsewhere.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Dingfelder, a second from Councilman Vera. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much. I'll get the spelling to the clerk.
Thank you. Mr. Shelby, do you have any new business?
Yes, I do, counsel. And I think it's worth a little investment of time. It relates to voicemails. I've received a lot of comments from a lot of people today with regard to the flow of business and the impact that public comment has had on city council's agenda. So I'd like counsel, we brought this up at the end of last meeting, and the question is what sort of direction does council want to have with regard to how we address public comment, particularly voicemails? As you know, people are able to use their phones from home to call in live. They're able to come in here using social distancing and masks and PPE and the like. So the question is, does council feel the need now to continue with voicemail, public comment as opposed to live participation, which is normally what's been done traditionally? When we were totally, when we were totally CMT, totally virtual, it made a lot of sense. Now it may make less sense. And the question that has been posed to me, which I'm struggling with, I'm struggling with, um, in this era of a COVID-19 pandemic and all the issues that we face, is how do we move along to address the people's business and still have the public, uh, give them the right to be able to have meaningful input before Council takes final action? So we tried to attempt to bring it up, I believe at a previous meeting, but Councilman Vieira and Councilman Goode's were absent and now I notice Councilman Miranda obviously is not here now, but the question is we have another meeting coming up in December. Uh, we have two regular meetings coming up in December. Um, your rules in that resolution that was passed way back in April contemplated voicemails. You can waive that, but the notice still contains that. So I need some sort of direction. If Council wants to give me direction, otherwise we can predict that, uh, your last meeting went from about 9:00 AM to about 5:00 PM and this meeting today is going from about 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So I'm looking for some sort of direction if Council wishes to address it or we address it as the meetings, um, evolve. It's your pleasure.
What is the pleasure of council? Would you like to discuss this item and address this now?
If I may.
Because December, if we don't address it today, it will be too late to address it on December 3rd.
Uh, if I may, I mean, I would rather have public comment either, uh, virtually or in person. Um, I, I, that's my opinion. Uh, I'm fine with that.
Also, the problem with voicemails, Counsel, just to follow up, is you can't distribute that out and have people have an expectation that when you get that on a Wednesday afternoon, you will have heard it by the time they, you know, the meetings are, are, are here on, on Thursday morning. That's just not realistic. So if they're not played at the meeting, um, we can, we can, we can still have the option, but they need to know that you may not hear it timely. And I don't think that would be, uh, something that they would be satisfied with.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, um, you know, we, we can have the mechanism for people to give voicemail and with the, the expectation that council members will on their own time listen to it, just like we're supposed to read emails that come to us on specific topics. Um, but just giving, I, I think at this point, now that we're, um, becoming more live, uh, folks, the opportunity to just, you know, send a voicemail, I think could overburden, uh, the time of council prospectively if, if, if abused. That's my opinion.
Any thoughts, suggestions from council members?
Well, I, uh, I agree with Mr. Vieira. I mean, uh, our poor deputy clerk, she's been working her tails off. I mean, she's, she's doing a lot, you know, and she's doing a lot, you know, at, at home as well, on CRA meetings, night meetings, and she's working around the clock. Uh, so I think, you know, we can view those, uh, hear those voicemails that come in at our leisure. I mean, we have a lot of capabilities now. We have the, the virtual, people are calling in, we have the kiosk outside. So there are a lot of mechanisms for those who really want to get to us and talk to us and still email to get to us. So, uh, I, I, I agree with Mr. Vieira. I don't think we need that fourth mechanism. We've got so many other things in place now.
That's right. Any, uh, official motion needed?
Well, yes, what, Counsel, I feel, I, I, well, yes, because, because of the fact that two things. Number one is your notice, your legal notice references it and that's because your resolution that you passed in April references it. So here's my recommendation if Council wishes. If you direct me to delete that from the notice requirement and then when you start your meeting on December 3rd, come in with a resolution that addresses that issue and amends this issue, then I think that's something that would be able to be, uh, would suffice. So the people would know now that the voicemail will not any longer be an option, at least for December 3rd. Um, and the notice will reflect that and Council will take official action on the 3rd to adopt that process. Um, and that would be something that, um, I'd need to know today. So if that were in the form of a motion, I can start the ball.
So moved, if I may.
We have a motion from Councilmember Vieira with a second from Councilmember Goode's. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Counsel, and Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. And I have nothing for new business. May I have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilman Vieira with a second from Councilman Carlson. All in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned.